...of the Planning Commission for the City of Dennison. Thank you all for being with us this morning. And it's tradition that we begin our meetings with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd care to join us, I'd ask you to stand with us at this time. Father, again, we're grateful for your blessings and thank you for our city, the place we call home. Ask that you would be with us today as we make decisions affecting the citizens of our community. And be with us in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little housekeeping before we get started this morning. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. So our decisions, with the exception of Platts and site plans, our decisions will be sent to City Council's final approval, which will be on their meeting held July the...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Okay, there you go. So what we'll do is when we get to the public hearing cases, we're going to give you the opportunity to come and speak. We would ask that when you come to the lectern that you would give us your name and address for the record. And seeing as we've got a pretty good sized crowd this morning, let's go ahead and impose a three minute time limit on our speakers. Okay, item number three will be our consent agenda. Are there any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to move that the consent agenda be approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll move to our public hearings now. Open the public hearings and we will start with item four A, the short.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have for you is a request to rezone property located along East Washington Street and North Lamar Avenue. Currently, the property is zoned commercial and they are requesting a rezone to the Single Family Five Residential Zoning District. The applicant wishes to develop the property in a residential manner by constructing single family homes. As you can see, the interior portion of this overall property is currently zoned Single Family Five. Back in 2022, the City Council approved a rezone for those properties that you see there, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission approving a replat for those interior lots. This is the same applicant, same developer. This is the proposed replat. This is also a companion item on this agenda that staff is seeking action on from the Planning and Zoning Commission. As I stated, they're requesting a rezone from the Commercial District to the SF Five Single Family Residential Zoning District. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner and single family structures comply with that neighborhood designation. So this request complies with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval and I'm present for any questions you may have and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, any questions to staff? I'd seen none. Would the applicant like to come forward in behalf of this request?
Yeah, we're just wanting to make sure that we get everything done for this entire development.
We need name and address for the record, please.
Address is 177 Timberbrook Circle, Dennison. Sorry about that. Yeah, we want to just, our intention was to go ahead and do the SF Five Residential, this whole, whole developments, we're just trying to get it all, all the i's dotted and t's crossed, we can proceed.
Any questions to the speaker? I did open. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak on this request? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item four A and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of changing the zoning of the subject property from Commercial District to Single Family SF Five Residential District, allowing for residential use.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item four B.
Item four B is a request for a conditional use permit for a property located at 120 South Burnett in order to operate a bar for Copacetic Cowboy. If you took a gander at the agenda, this may, this operation or this business may look a little familiar. They previously came through for a conditional use permit for operations known as Champagne Charlie and that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 22nd, 2022, which the Commission recommended approval of. And then it moved on to City Council and received approval for the conditional use permit on April 4th, 2022. There is a stipulation within all of our conditional use permits that require a certificate of occupancy be provided within 180 days or a construction permit. Given that this, there's a name change with, for this use, they were required to move forward with a conditional, a new conditional use permit. However, the operations are exactly the same as what was proposed for Champagne Charlie's. There are no new conditions, no operation, hours of operation change. And for those Commission members that were not present for that initial conditional use permit, just so you know, Copacetic Cowboy is, it's a new cocktail house that will occupy the suites at 120 South Burnett and those suites are 10102. The building consists of 3,000 square feet. An applicant wishes to establish a stylish and comfortable atmosphere with a unique and approachable beverage and food menu. This request does comply with the comprehensive plan and for what is required or what is allowed within the Entertainment District or the downtown area. For that, staff does recommend approval of the request again and the applicant is here if you have any questions of them.
Hello, my name's Cody Riggs, I'm the owner of Copacetic Cowboy. We did have a name change due to some trademark issues, I'm sorry.
You'll have to open the public hearing first.
Oh, a little bit.
Individually.
Okay, we'll open the, okay, open four A for me then, please.
Sorry, my name's Cody Riggs, I'm the owner of Copacetic Cowboy. We did have a name change due to some trademark issues we were trying to avoid and just trying to move forward doing the exact same program we were before, but being an old building, it took a little bit longer than expected and with some untrustworthy contractors that kind of got in our way a little bit, but we've made some changes and are ready to be open as soon as we get approvals.
Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit as presented for the use of a bar for Copacetic Cowboy.
Have a motion?
May I second?
Have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ousted, okay. Item four C, we will open that public hearing.
Item four C is a request for a replat approval. This is the companion item to item four A for Century Ridge Edition Phase Two. As stated in item four A, the applicant is requesting a rezone for the highlighted portions zoned commercial to the SF Five Single Family Residential Zoning District so that they can construct single family homes. The proposed replat, all the lots that are depicted on the replat do meet the minimum lot size, depth and width requirements that are listed within the Single Family Five Residential Zoning District. There is significant infrastructure construction that is required for this subdivision to move forward with the development. Water and sewer extensions are both required in addition to the installation of curb and gutter along Washington Street and North Lamar Avenue. So civil engineering plans are required for all the extensions of any city infrastructure. And these plans are to be submitted to the city engineering staff to be reviewed and approved prior to any infrastructure construction. Upon the infrastructure being accepted by the city, if this plat is approved, staff can move forward with filing it at that time. However, I ask that the Commission place a condition on approving the replat given that it has to, the property has to be rezoned and civil engineering plans are requested and that recommended motion is listed in the staff report. Given that the, the lot sizes meet the minimum requirements and we are recommending approval for the zoning, staff does recommend approval of the replat as well. I'm present for any questions you may have and so is the applicant.
Questions to staff? Anyone here to speak on behalf of this request? Same routine, name and address.
Kent Hewlett, 177 Timberbrook Circle. Just one more box and got to check to get the project moving, so just on the replat, we'd like to go ahead and get that approved.
Questions? Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to conditionally approve posery plat pending zoning approval by the City Council and approval of the civil engineering plans.
I'll second.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. We're going to open item four D.
Item four D is a request for a conditional use permit for property zoned local retail within the Austin Avenue Overlay District for a bar for Slush Premium Daqries for a property located at 221 North Austin Avenue. And I tell you what, I don't know how to spell premium or daqries. I've learned through my staff report as well as this slideshow, so if there are any mistakes, I apologize. Those are two very hard words. This is an aerial view of that subject property. It's located at the corner of West Gandy Street and North Austin Avenue. And as I mentioned, it is zoned local retail and it does fall within the Austin Avenue Overlay District. This is another conditional use permit that received a recommendation of approval as well as approval by the City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit at their meeting held on June 28th, 2022. And then City Council, City Council gave the final approval at their meeting on July 11th, 2022. They are kind of in the same scenario as the previous conditional use permit where they had to meet that 180 day mark for a certificate of occupancy and they have been, if you've driven by, they have been working on the building. However, given that that conditional use permit lapsed, they are here to reinstate that so that they can move forward with open, so they can open during the summertime.
What's our anticipated opening date?
I believe as, as soon as they can get approved, but I'll let the applicant speak on that whenever they come up and talk. The applicant intends to sell alcoholic and non-alcoholic frozen drinks for both on and off premises consumption. There is seating provided, however, they are not being served. They will take their drinks and sit down if they wish or they can take the drinks and go. This was something that the TABC allowed during COVID and has continued to allow. And this is their site plan. This is the same site plan they provided with the original conditional use permit. They are providing a few parking spaces, however, they are providing a drive-through on the west side of the building to be entered off of Gandy and to exit in that alley that exists there. This request does comply with the comprehensive plan, similar to the previous conditional use permit for a bar. This is in the downtown or near the downtown area, which is recommended by the comprehensive plan that entertainment or bar establishments be allowed. Staff recommends approval of the request and I am present for any questions you may have and so is the applicant. And I did forget to mention, I'm sorry, there were no conditions changed within this applicant, however, they did expand their hours of operation a little bit and those are listed in the staff report.
And I think I have two, I have two letters, both support the request. Okay, anyone here to speak on behalf of this request?
Hi, I'm Heather LaRosa. My sister and I are the owners of Slush and yes, this is just...
Can you give us an address?
Sure, 2018 Norwood Street, Sherman, Texas. Again, this is something that previously has went through and we're, we're basically ready to open. We're waiting on the last little bits of fresh plants and that sort of thing until we have an actual open date, but we're shooting for August 1st, so.
Any chance we can get you to move from Sherman to Dennison?
Personally? Well, you know, it would help with the drive, right?
We're always trying to get people out.
Out of Sherman, right, right, thank you.
All right, anybody else here to speak on behalf of this request? All right, we will close the public hearing and if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the request for a conditional use permit for a bar for Slush Premium Daqries, spelled correctly, located at 221 North Austin Avenue.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, we will open four E.
Thank you, sir. Item four E is a request to initially zone property located along Teresa Drive or legally described as lots one, two and three, Block A of the ROS Estates. This is an aerial view of that subject property. And the applicant has already constructed three or they're newly constructed single family homes on each of these lots. However, they are needing to connect to city utilities and therefore have also requested a voluntary annexation for the subject property. They are requesting that these properties be zoned Single Family 7.5. The lot sizes meet those requirements and I believe that the home size also meets the requirements listed within the Single Family 7.5 zoning district. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. So initially zoning this property to the Single Family zoning district presented complies with the future land use plan as well as the comprehensive plan. This was a minor plat that was approved a few years back, but that's how, that's how the lots are currently laid out. Staff does recommend approval of the request and I am present for any questions you may have and the applicant is here as well.
Questions to staff? Okay. Applicant like to come?
Nothing really to add unless you guys have questions.
Okay, we do, we'll bring you up, okay? Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Any questions, guys? All right. If that be the case, I'm going to close the public hearing, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of initially zoning the subject property to the SF 7.5 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
I'll second. Okay, also, we do have, before we vote, we do have one, one letter that is of opposition. I think she's just mainly concerned about her property, but this particular case has nothing to do with her property. So there's nothing about this case that impacts her, so make that for the record, please. All right, we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Open the public hearing on item four F.
This item four F is a city-initiated or a staff-initiated request who make a recommendation on amending section 28 dot 46, the Highway Oriented and Corridor District. I think when we, we kind of started this process, we were, we were hopeful that we could dig into this ordinance and really amend all of the parts that we, we don't like or we wish we could change. However, you'll, we'll talk about it during staff updates, but staff believes that it is more appropriate to recommend this one amendment and then ask the Commission for recommendations on other amendments that they would like to see and maybe have a discussion on those. So this, this amendment is for section 28 dot 46 dot two, which is the authorized uses listed under the Highway Oriented and Corridor Overlay District zoning ordinance. And what this will allow, this amendment will allow us to do is remove language that pertains to the use regulation chart that is no longer applicable. If you, if you look at the backup that I've provided you under number one, under 28 dot 46 dot two B1, it says any uses listed under manufacturing and industrial in section 28 dot 41, 49, which is our use regulation chart. We, that was changed in 2021. Back in, before 2021, the use regulation chart was sectioned out based on use, so residential, retail, office, et cetera. It's not anymore, it's in alphabetical order. So all of those sections have been removed and this has kind of, it's provided some difficulty when you send the use regulation chart to individuals and they automatically see that and they think their use is not allowed. So staff is asking that that be amended and removed as well as removing the disallowance for warehouse mini self-storage and providing that as a allowance with an approved conditional use permit. We have Five Star Storage that is, is an established business off of Pottsboro Road on the west side of 75 and they came through for a conditional use permit and so this will allow them to be even more compliant. And then we also have a planned development for a mini warehouse self-storage unit for property located off of 75. And while we were supportive of that and we received recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval as well as approval by City Council, it would be more appropriate providing a conditional use permit allowance versus rezoning to an entire planned development overlay district. I don't, we may see more of these uses and depending upon how they present themselves will be whether staff recommends approval and then ultimately brings it before the Commission for approval. But staff does believe this is a better use of the zoning. Staff recommends approval of the request and I know that was a lot of information, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Question, office warehouse, is that going to need CUP as well?
So that is actually an allowed, it is an allowed use within the Highway Overlay. It does require a conditional use permit based on the zoning district. I think it's only allowed in the Commercial Zoning District with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And it is not listed as a use that is prohibited by the Highway Overlay, but that does play into the First Amendment I mentioned, striking the uses listed under industrial because at one time that use of office warehouse was listed as an industrial use and was subsequently prohibited by the Highway Overlay. Now that, that is not sectioned out that way, it's allowed with a conditional use permit.
Okay. So I guess I have a question as well. So we'd approve the one, I guess, a couple meetings.
Five star.
Five star, so does that now need, that will not need to run through?
No, so it, for a timeline of events, Five Star Storage received their conditional, original conditional use permit in July of 2021. Then this ordinance was changed in October of 2021. Through researching that particular conditional use permit when they came back through for the expansion, we discovered that they technically weren't compliant. And so we have, we've pursued this amendment in order to make them compliant for their business that's already established, but to also be a little bit more mindful of what may be coming in in the future. And a conditional use permit, in my opinion, is a much better use of staff and the Commission's time rather than rezoning five acres to a planned development for its particular use.
And then there was a second one as well that was up north of 84.
That's the...
And that one was totally rezoned.
That was the planned development, yes, sir.
Okay, this makes a little more sense.
And if you recall, if you recall, that one also had material changes and things like that. So when Diane said that we'll come back to you with other recommendations and we'd like some insight and guidance from all of you on the Highway Overlay, those are the other things we'll be looking at because we know material has changed and we're having to go through processes that we don't think are, they're just not right to have applicants going through from a staff standpoint, from their timeline. So we want to make it more streamlined and easier for them as well based upon what we know the industry looks like and how it's changed. When this was written, I think it was, it was a while ago, so we know that it's a little bit outdated and we also want input on what we want that Highway Overlay to look like. We have talked in the past about not being the same as Plano and Sherman, so how do we make sure that we are bringing all those aspects into our overlay to distinguish ourselves?
And it's far safer adjusting the overlay versus opening it up to planned development.
Yes, and everything that Mary discussed, we will touch on at the staff updates.
I think we have to look, we have to look at the material because honestly, the way it's written right now, I think we're going to wind up with a really boring highway corridor if we don't make some changes.
And, and we're seeking any kind of input during the staff update portion. This is solely to, for the recommendation for the authorized uses and I, I as staff am seeking for that particular so I can carry this on to council. But we do, once we get to staff updates...
Discuss it there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, cool, all right. Okay, so we're on item four F, right? No.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, we're on four.
Just need a, a motion, please.
So do I have anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion if I haven't already done that. I may have already done it.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment.
Okay, may I second? Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll open item four G.
Thank you, sir. Item four G is a request to rezone approximately .2066 of an acre, legally described as Lot One, Block One of the H-Tones First Edition, commonly known as 129 East Johnson Street. This property is located kind of at the corner of North Houston and East Johnson, north of North Lamar Avenue. And it is currently zoned commercial and the applicant is seeking a single family five residential zoning so that they can move forward with constructing a single family structure. You can kind of tell the adjacent properties to the west have already been developed in a residential manner. I do believe that these were built during the time of the infill overlay. I'm not sure how the zoning was missed, however, the applicant submitted a building permit and I, during my research, I discovered that this property was zoned commercial. This request not only would comply with the development to the south, as you can see, all the property to the south is zoned Single Family Five, but it also is compliant with the future land use plan. The future land use plan does designate this area as neighborhood and single family homes are appropriate for that designation. Given that, staff does recommend approval of the request and I'm present for any questions you may have and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward?
Hi, Louise Moran, 910 South Travis Street, Sherman, Texas. Good morning, we just have a lot that was, that I missed. I thought it was zoned residential before I submitted the building permit, so here we are.
You're not the only one that's done that.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions to the speaker? I don't think so, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion? This has happened a bunch, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the approval of changing the zoning of the subject property from Commercial District to Single Family SF Five Residential District to allow for residential use.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are going to move to item five, which is our staff updates.
Thank you, sir. First staff update is to make you all aware that there is a training opportunity for elected and appointed officials through the APA Midwest Section. APA is the American Planning Association. And the Midwest Section of the Texas Chapter is putting on a training opportunity for, as I mentioned, people in Planning and Zoning Commission, staff and City Council. The, it takes place on July 26th and it's from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, located in North Richland Hills. If you are interested in this training opportunity, please let me know. They'll go over planning law, best practices, they do provide lunch and snack opportunities, but just let me know and I'll be happy to register you. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend. I wanted to, but I have other requirements later that afternoon. I don't know if you'll, I don't think she'll be able to attend, so you'll be...
Kind of convenient.
I know, sorry. Okay.
The coordinator is very good and so I think it would be beneficial. It's always good to just hear someone else's perspective.
It's the 26th, what day is that on?
That's a Friday.
It's a Friday?
How many, how many people are coming?
But I think I want to go.
Please let me know whoever would like to go.
We'll cover the charge of the training and so just let us know.
Okay.
It's not a crazy cost or anything, I think it's $35, so we're happy to do that.
Awesome.
And you said we're in North Richland Hills?
Yes, ma'am. So if you'll just either shoot us an email, let us know as soon as you can so that we make sure that we're able to get you a ticket. There was nothing in there about, you know, limited seating. There was nothing in there about, you know, limited seating or anything of that nature, but just, just let us know.
If, if we all go, we could probably carpool.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Awesome. And thank you. I saw it and I was like, oh, this will be pretty good for, yep. And I wish I could go with you, but you'll have fun without me. The second update is, as we mentioned, kind of in the item pertaining to the recommendation for the amendment to the highway overlay. So we're seeking input on all the standards that are listed within the highway overlay ordinance and specifically building materials and signage, but overall, as Mary stated, we want to understand what the vision is for that corridor area. The ordinance, from what I could tell, it's had a few amendments over the past couple of years, but when it was written, I can't find anything, so I'm assuming it was written in 2009, along with the other ordinances. That was when I graduated high school, so that's a long time ago. So we, we are, we want to make sure that whatever we, however we move forward with amending this ordinance, that we don't regret it and that we're mindful of the modernization of how things are being constructed, our landscape, and things of that nature. So we're open to have that discussion now. The entire ordinance is in this packet. I put it all in there on purpose instead of just putting the couple pages I requested amendments on. So if you're, if you would like to keep it, if we need to have another staff update at the next meeting after you've reviewed it and you have direction for staff, I think that's appropriate as well. Or if you already have some ideas of what you want, like staff to research on or to provide updates on at the next meeting, please let us know.
What?
I think, sorry, if I could just add, when Diane and I were discussing this, we tried to think about places that stand out in our own heads, where we've been, whether it's in Texas or elsewhere, right? And so with the, when we do the comprehensive plan update and rewrite, we'll have that greater community input, which should help drive that vision, but we're a little worried that we, by the time that happens, we're already going to see a lot of this develop. So we're trying to get ahead of it. So I'd ask you to think long-term and big picture, right? What is that vision for 20 years down the road when people are coming up 75? What are they going to see that sets us apart? So that's, that's where my head is, and so I think as we were discussing, we're trying to think of other cities pulling from their ordinances, and if something comes to mind, we're happy to do that legwork for you. If you want to shoot us an email and say, you know, whichever community is something that, the landscaping is something I like, the signage is something I like, let us know and we'll, we'll pull that stuff out and start looking at it.
Well, I personally think that we need to, we need to look at the uses, because I think at one point there, there was a move to prohibit certain uses that actually the best place for them was on the highway. I think we have to, and since this overlay was in existence before the state changed the law, we do have a little bit more authority and control over materials, architecture. I mean, I'm not one who thinks we should just make everything look the same along there, but I think everything has to be somewhat cohesive within the particular development that they're doing. But I think we need to really look closely at the uses, number one, and are there uses that are actually prohibited that actually would be fit better in that highway district? And do we have uses in there now that don't fit there? Number one. Then number two, the materials thing. It drives me crazy to be so restrictive like we are because I think we do affect the architectural palette of our developments, number two. Thirdly, one of my pet peeves has always been signage. In a lot of, of cities, I think prohibit signage that's necessary so that that building can be identified. Now, you know, again, one of the things we have to look at too is branding for a lot of these, of these, the car dealerships, the restaurants, retailers, their buildings themselves is a billboard for them. But if we restrict that signage to be in monument signs that are so small and somebody's doing 75 miles an hour down that freeway, they're, you know, they're going to miss it, you know, kind of thing. So we got to, I think, be a little bit, when we look at the signage thing, we're going to have to think about, I would think, we need to think about being able to, the visibility factor.
I would ask that if you are, if you are concerned about the signage, our sign ordinance is very kind to businesses along the highway overlay. I think it's, it might be spelt out in the highway overlay ordinance that's provided, but I know chapter 19, which is the sign ordinance, I mean, it's, it's very generous. What I think from a staff perspective, and once again, this is my opinion, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, you definitely don't want to see just a row of pole signs as you go down 75, because when you drive now carefully because they're doing construction, right, you see just a bunch of trees. And we know that that's not what it's going to look like in the future. So how do we, from a staff perspective, that's what, how do we preserve that? How do we still allow for businesses to move in along this corridor? How do we allow them to be, you know, architecturally different? And then also, how do we, how do we allow for them to advertise their business without losing just the, the beautiful nature that we currently have?
So does, does the staff believe that it's, it's a large overlay, right? So you're basically-
Correct.
-TMC all the way up to 69, verge of 75 south of the Welcome Center.
I think it, yes, I think it goes all the way to the river. Yes, sir.
Pretty much that whole corridor. But do you believe that it's one overlay or do you believe that there are multiple overlays within that? Then you could put some use, pair of uses up with, the better suit, to your point. Certain things can be allowed north of 84 and south of, but with, you know, if you're looking at your prime overlay, which is, I don't know, I guess it's probably 503 up to 84. Right? To me, that, that's a very different piece of property and look and feel than down towards TMC or from there out to the Welcome Center.
And that's a very good point. Yes.
So it could be multiple pieces of that overlay, I think, to get to where Charlie was going as well. Yeah. Because that's a huge overlay.
Especially, and to add on to what you all are saying, is that we are the main gateway coming into Texas from Oklahoma, and so for us to be able to embrace that identity as our own gateway, as the city of Denison, and that gateway into Texas from another state, but to still integrate those sub-districts within that overlay district corridor.
Let's don't forget that Preston Harbor is going to be coming from the lake right there at 84, north of 84, so that side right there is going to be developed into, into Preston Harbor.
So we've got branches off of that overlay.
Yeah.
And I think to your credit, Mr. President, we were looking at Frisco's, and that's how they do it. They have multiple, multiple overlays and districts and, yeah.
Because you've got stuff by the Welcome Center, you've got lake traffic, you've got commerce coming into Denison, you've got the medical overlay, kind of, medical, it doesn't dis, but you've got the medical center coming in, and those are very different areas-
Correct.
-that you could really pair very nice uses with to, to help build it up.
Right. And I, with all of your recommendations, I do think it needs to be a broader community discussion. I think some public engagement is really, really important for these kinds of decisions. So I'd like to see that happen as well.
Yeah. But then it would help our friends at DDO find people for those certain uses, so.
That's y'all, Tiffany.
I would add, I was involved back in the day, both the overlay district for the Parkway, and we had what was called a billboard committee that came up with the regulations on that. And in time, anybody would want to know some of the history that went into that process. I'd be glad to discuss.
Yes, please. Yes. Yes, please.
It was very fragmented, billboards, for example. Half of the committee did not want any billboards at all, and the other half wanted it unregulated. And so this was a compromise, is I guess the best way to put that. But there were no digital signs back then, and of course, that's kind of changed the billboard market and has made that much more aesthetically pleasing and functional. And a lot of things have changed since then, and it's, it is time to look at it.
We appreciate that.
There is, it's very hard to research some of this information, given, you know, software changes or lack of software, so you're basing it off of just the ordinance itself. There's no minutes to go back and look at, you know, commission meetings, so any, any information that you have is greatly appreciated.
Something that might be helpful, I think, for us all to visualize it would be just kind of a one-page map overlay, but also showing the stuff that's already been approved because you've got, or proposed or discussed, we know we've got landings have discussed the stuff out by the Welcome Center. We've got developments already for the corner of 69. We've approved something for the corner of Crawford Residential, I mean, there's several already approved along there. It might be nice to map that out so you can look at what's there versus, because when you drive by, there's a stuff, I mean, a lot of things have already come through the committee, right? Or discussed. Yeah. That would be, I think that would be helpful to visualize it.
And that was it after for staff updates, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at 10:41 AM.